Good afternoon, everyone. And thank you for joining us for this January 3rd special City Commission meeting. I want to begin by wishing everybody a happy snowy new year here in the city of Tallahassee. And I'm looking forward to a really great year. So Commissioners, thank you all for being here with us. I hope you enjoyed your breaks respectively. We will begin with whether or not there are any agenda modifications. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we've added Items 3, or excuse me, Item 1 and Item 3 to your agenda.
No other agenda modifications. We'll have citizens who wish to be heard on agended items. Treasurer Clerk, are there any speakers?
Mayor, we do have three speakers this morning. The first is Joe West. I'll ask him as he approaches. I'll remind speakers, although I think each is familiar with our process, you'll have three minutes for your remarks. We would appreciate your name and address for the record, and I'll let you know when three minutes has expired.
My name is Joe West, Duffton Loop, here in Tallahassee. Good morning, good afternoon, members of the Commission, appointees, staff, and fellow citizens. Choices. Let's talk about choices today. While I have not followed the performance of this Commission as closely as others in the community, I have seen and heard enough with my own eyes and ears to draw the conclusion that, for the most part, it seems that no one up there really cares much about the opinions of the people you chose to represent. If polls are to believe, to be believed, over eighty percent of the population chooses to question the integrity of this Commission and its appointees. When citizens voiced their concerns about the integrity of a city manager, all five of you supported, the course of action this Commission chose was to give that manager a $20,000 per month paid vacation. When conclusive evidence in the form of statements made by that manager of violations of his employment contract became public record, this Commission chose to ignore those concerns with fabrications about due process and contractual obligations. Contractual obligations, the city attorney chose not to, decided to not share with us. Due process, a term that was used by at least three of you in the December meeting. Due process guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States for anyone charged with a criminal offense, a criminal offense. Due process has absolutely nothing to do with employment contract violations. Is it possible the city attorney is not familiar with the differences in contractual obligations and criminal offenses? I wouldn't think so, but if that is the case, should he have any input on who our next city attorney should be? Now, the city attorney has negotiated a settlement with an employee who has met every threshold for justified termination, a settlement that will cost the tax-paying citizens of Tallahassee, at the very least, ninety-plus thousand dollars on top of the forty thousand dollars he's already been given, plus legal fees for his criminal behavior to pay him his hourly wage, which I believe is about $125 an hour during any future investigations into the corrupt practices done in this administration. This is not a negotiated settlement. This is a gift at the expense of those people you all chose to represent. Currently, this Commission has three vacancies for appointees. With less than a twenty percent approval rating, one might think this Commission would choose to try and do what almost everyone thinks is the next right thing to do: advertise these positions nationally and not allow any current appointees to have any input on the standards for their replacements. Bring in qualified people who have no ties or obligations to local businesses. Let's find qualified people who will feel a sense of obligation to the citizens of Tallahassee.
The next speaker is Curtis Baines.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, Commissioners. Curtis Baines, 1323 East Tennessee Street. We are at a pivotal and rare opportunity in Tallahassee's history where you can decide what the future of your city administration will be. You've got a city manager resignation pending, you currently have a proposal for city attorney, and you're going to have an advertisement for city auditor. I certainly feel sad, bad for the city clerk treasurer. He must be puzzled by the turn of events here in the last few months, but this is your opportunity to put your stamp on the city administration because these people will answer to you. One of the issues before you this afternoon is the resignation of the current city manager, which, in my opinion, is probably in the best interest of the city, but one of the concerns I have here is on the resignation agreement, is that you are giving the city manager a blanket release for everything he may or may not have done, and I would just put it to you, do you know what he has done and what you are, from what you are releasing him? It seems to me that that would be a far better release than, a specific release than just general release of everything he's done. Presumably, he has always acted in his role as city manager, but there is no assurance that he's always acted within the scope of that, of his employment, which could be an issue. You also have before you a proposal for, or consideration, an update for the city attorney, which I understand from reading reports, is that there wasn't very many applicants. I don't know if that was due to the brevity of the advertisement period or exactly what the cause of that was, but I think at least one person was concerned about the breadth of the net that was cast for a replacement city attorney, so I would urge you to look at that more closely. You could also begin, I guess, today you would begin, or this week you would begin the process of advertising for a city auditor, and I would certainly urge you to look for those outside the organization at this time to bring new perspectives into the city. And remind you that there is no hurry on any of this. You do not need to be rushed, in my opinion. Take your time, give it your best thinking on each of these issues, and move forward.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Greg Marr, and then Erwin Jackson. Marr?
For clarity, I'm Greg Marr Jr. There's another one of us running around here occasionally. My address is 81 Bay Pine Drive, Crawfordville, and while I don't reside in Tallahassee, I work here. My business address is 2507 Callaway Road. I serve Tallahassee, as do my customers. They, their customers, and most of their families reside in Tallahassee. Tallahassee, its community and economy are an enormous part of my life and that of my family. The fact that this Commission is entertaining the thought of rewarding city manager Rick Fernandez with a significant severance package and not pursuing punitive action and further investigation of his abuses of his office, I find to be shameful. His, and many of you Commissioners, which are currently under investigation and ethics scrutiny, have damaged this region, not just this city. As a member of broadcast media in this city, I've been approached no less than twenty times by city employees, vendors, and citizens. Each of them is afraid to speak publicly or to make formal complaints because each of them has the very real understanding that they and they alone will be the ones who suffer consequences, that they have very little reasonable expectation that this body or the agents of this city's government will treat them fairly or even pursue justice. That says all that needs to be said about your leadership and any future leadership by members of this body. Mr. Ziffer wants to be the next mayor of this city, and Mr. Gillum wants to be Florida's next governor. Either of those things would be the wrong path forward. If any of you have any integrity or decency remaining, you should come clean, step down, and set this community and region on a path of healing and a pursuit of justice. Shame on you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Next speaker.
Erwin Jackson, and that's the last speaker for whom I have before. Mayor?
Do you hear? I need some help getting the light overhead turned on. Excellent. Thank you, sir. Take this and stick that where you need to stick that picture so I don't want to get... Yeah, zoom it in. Get it as good as you can. That's great. We gotta get the lights, the TV cameras on here so they can see them. Dr. Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff, The Tallahassee Truth Teller, January 3rd edition. I read the resignation letter of Rick Fernandez, and it made me sick. Fernandez forgot to mention he was leaving because he was guilty of lying to this Commission and Tallahassee residents, taking bribes from city lobbyists, stealing city labor and materials to repair his personal home and rental property, and that he took $5,000 cash bribe to pay for his daughter's wedding, and when discovered, he destroyed public documents to hide his unethical and illegal actions. It is ironic that a cash bribe for Fernandez's daughter's wedding will be remembered as the beginning of the tragic end of Fernandez's career. And his punishment, as perceived by this body, is to receive a check of $130,000 plus retirement benefits for being caught and admitting to being a liar and a thief. Wow. He has a lot of information on each of you. Commissioner Richardson, the street committee that you talked about a couple weeks ago, told you that the Commission and crooked city attorney Shelley would stall action on Fernandez until December 23rd, 2017, allowing Fernandez to reach his second-year anniversary and receive an even larger retirement check, and that's exactly what happened. A couple weeks ago, Scott Maddox and Nancy Miller argued, "There is no proof Fernandez was ever in the lobbyist Corey's football box." Well, I have a picture here to show, and what you see, I think, is very good evidence. It has Fernandez in the box that we were describing, similar to the picture of Scott in your trip to Vegas with your crooked contractors and your mini stripper. I wasn't there, but I do believe the picture. Scott, if you really want more evidence, I know you and Andy were in the box also with Fernandez. I guess you forgot that. Pictures are forthcoming. Other city employees in that box were Fernandez's friends, Alan Blair, Human Resources, and Mike Tedros, Underground Utilities. I'm asking the city Ethics Board to investigate both these individuals for accepting gifts and bribery. Alan happens to be here. Why don't we just ask her this afternoon if she was in the box? And City Commissioners, anyone who votes for this proposed agreement, which is nothing more than a hush money, will be marked the end, that will be marking the end of their political career. Rick Fernandez has disgraced himself and his family. He should be fired immediately with cause, receiving not a single dollar, shunned by our community, and if found guilty of felony charges, should lose his retirement benefits like any other city employee. But I am okay if he receives free room and meals for a couple years, compliments of the state prison system.
Excuse me?
Harold knows indicted, Fernandez resigns in disgrace, and the FBI has not even filed their estimated 24 criminal indictments.
Your three minutes have expired.
The truth is finally getting out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's gonna be a great 2018.
No further speakers. Mayor?
No other speakers. Thank you very much. Commissioners, we're now at the point in the meeting where I'll yield to the city attorney for Item 1.
Thank you, Mayor. At the December 6th meeting of this Commission, we discussed the city manager's paid administrative leave, and also, at the end of that particular item, I was directed to contact an outside law firm to begin an internal investigation of some of the allegations against the city manager, to otherwise consider all the options, including the possibility of a negotiated resignation. I have met, within the last ten days, several times with Mr. Fernandez and his attorneys, and present to you today a signed agreement signed by both myself and Mr. Fernandez, which I can fully recommend for consideration and approval. It is certainly, as all negotiated settlements are a compromise, it takes into account what was in the employment contract of Mr. Fernandez. I think it also takes into account some of the information that we have been able to actually document without beginning the interviews that were actually scheduled to start today and continue through tomorrow by an outside attorney that had been retained by the city attorney's office. The amount of severance is essentially eighteen weeks. Under the existing employment contract, the number of weeks would have been twenty plus eight additional weeks or two additional months of notice pay, and the prorated deferred compensation added on to the salary, eighteen-week salary, is simply that deferred comp that has been part of his employment agreement since he's been city manager. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I do think it is fair and reasonable. I do think it is a compromise of certain demands that Mr. Fernandez made, and my assessment of what was reasonable and what, to date, had in fact been substantiated and proved. It does not, obviously, does not take into account the pending complaint before the Ethics Commission, that is pending, interviews and witnesses have, and documents have been produced for the Ethics Commission, and that's still to come, and the results of that will probably be in the spring sometime. That does not affect that. If, in reference to that, there is a provision in the agreement, the resignation agreement, that should he be cleared entirely of everything, he'd be entitled to reimbursement of his attorney's fees. If he is not cleared in its entirety, then he is not eligible for that reimbursement under the city's standing policy on that. I'll stop at that point. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Mr. Attorney, could you give the financial value of what Mr. Fernandez would have been entitled to over the course of his contract, had it taken its natural course?
I calculated, Mayor, to be between $143,000 and $148,000, assuming that all those, the twenty weeks severance pay and the two months of notice pay were included in that contract, also specifically provided that the deferred comp was to be added to the salary basis.
So, Mr. Mayor? Yes, Commissioner Richardson.
Mr. Attorney, could you tell us what then was the, in terms of the savings of taxpayers' dollars, what was the savings in this settlement as opposed to the city pursuing a termination of the contract?
Mayor, I mean Commissioner Richardson, assuming, again, that we had had no litigation over it, and if there had been a litigation, we were responsible under the existing employment contract to pay his attorney's fees if he did prevail, but that aside, the difference is basically about fifty, approximately $50,000.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Commissioners, are there other questions? The Attorney, Commissioner Miller?
Mayor, I'd like to move Option 1, and I'd also like to add to that that we appoint as interim city manager, former city manager Dan Klayman.
There's a motion? There's no second to that motion.
Can we separate those two?
Is there a motion to separate the two?
If, in that case, I'd like to move Option 1.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to Option 1. Commissioners, any comments, any questions on this? If not, all those in favor of Option 1, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioners, I think we are on the second part of that question, which is the appointment of an interim city manager, and I don't mind offering some thoughts here as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just, I'll second that just for conversation, so we can have discussion.
Second, Klayman?
Just for discussion.
Sure. My substitute would actually be to appoint former city manager Anita Favors Thompson as the interim city manager, and the purpose for that, at least for me, is I do think that it is important that we get a steady and as experienced a hand as we possibly can here in the city government, particularly given the significant transitions that we're undergoing at the appointed official level. Not to say anything of Mr. Klayman's experiences here in the government, but it has been some time since he last served this government, and I think this government has grown and there's been significant transition since he last served. Anita's time here is relatively recent. I think she is very familiar with the operations of this government. Most of the organization and the structure that exists today came about prior to her departure, with some exception of some reorganization that Mr. Fernandez undertook here. I think for, you know, the vastness of the operation that is the city government, I mean, a lot of people, you know, see these meetings and think, you know, we're kind of the folks making the decisions on an everyday basis, and all of us know that our decisions are about the four appointed officials and the policy direction, and that the city manager's role is to oversee the everyday running of this government, and I just want stability more than I want anything in that regard. I would also, you know, my substitute as well, would also be that we undertake a national search for the next city manager, and would request that the staff bring us back some thinking on national firms. I think we ought to go the route of a headhunter, who would have the charge of going out to find the very, very best talent to bring forward. And then I'll just say a thing about Mr. Goad, kind of ant infestation, which is, you know, in his presence, which is simply to say that my recommendation is, without regard to what I think are his unvarnished credentials as an operator, as a manager, as an assistant city manager, but it's my hope that he will apply and pursue the position of city manager. And I think in order for us to get the wide array and diversity of candidates that we want to see in a city manager, that we don't want to send the signal that this is an inside job, that there's, I think, one of the things on the city attorney thing, if I could just conflate the two, is that most people, when they're looking, applying for a job of this significance, the first question they ask is whether or not there's a strong internal candidate, and if there is a strong internal candidate, there's a judgment around whether or not folks would want to make application and pursue that. And so, I'd like, I'd like for him to make application, that's a choice that he has to make, but I don't think that that application should be made at the same time as serving in the interim capacity. So, my substitute motion would be that we appoint former city manager Anita Favors Thompson in the interim, and that we direct staff to bring back recommendations around a national search process for the city manager.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I'm gonna set it aside and hear Commissioner Maddox, followed by Commissioner Ziffer.
Well, Miller was...
Miller, and then Ziffer. I apologize.
I don't see on the agenda where we're appointing an interim city manager. I'm a bit confused. Did something go out that I didn't see? I thought that we already voted to have Mr. Goad be the interim city manager, and I saw on the agenda approval of city manager resignation agreement, update on city attorney recruitment process, and authorization to begin recruitment process for vacant city auditor position, and approval of settlement of lawsuit, which has been advertised and has gone to the public, and we took public testimony based on that. I am a adamant, early, strong supporter of Anita Favors Thompson, but I have not spoken to her at all. I've not heard from her at all, whether she's even interested in this, or, so, I mean, I think we're out of our lane here on naming interims when it's not agended and the public hasn't been noticed on it, and we've already had a vote for an interim, so I'm not gonna support naming an interim, other than our original vote for Mr. Goad, which stands, from any motions that come today.
Unless the city attorney to let us know whether or not we are acting within appropriate procedure. It's my understanding that we appointed Mr. Goad in the interim during the extended leave of the city manager. We no longer have a city manager as a result of the motion that we just passed. So, if that is an incorrect understanding, then I hope you'll make me, make me clear.
No, I think that's correct. I think a majority of the commissioners can certainly go forward to appoint an interim.
Commissioner Miller, followed by Commissioner Ziffer.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that Commissioner Maddox is correct, and possibly we should postpone this decision and actually agenda it for discussion at our January 10th, I guess it would be, meeting when we have retreat. And I'm fine with putting off this discussion. The main reason that I, and of course, as you know, Mr. Klayman just offered, made the offer this morning to step in and assist us in this particular time with this transition. So I know that in him, we have someone that has actually, is willing to do it, and with Anita, I'm not sure she would be. Secondarily, I think that it's important right now, as a number of the speakers have pointed out, that we have someone that is from, is not from now or in the recent past, from the city, our city family. And I think that Mr. Klayman has gained some experience beyond Tallahassee, in Hillsborough County and Duval, since he was here, but has presented this offer out of his affection for this city. I've spoken to him, and so I'm more comfortable with that he has a respect for the team and that has been managing our city for the last two months. And I want to say right now, absolutely, you have my utmost thanks and admiration for the job that you've done, because you've all worked together so well and are doing an excellent job, so I'm perfectly happy to leave you in place if that's the decision. But I think that he has experience with headhunting, or with hiring firms, is more aware of that, and the fact that he hasn't been here recently, I think, gives me comfort, and I hope would give the public some assurance that we are looking to somebody who is independent.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ziffer.
It, it seems to me, so far, there have been bits and pieces from the three that have spoken, that I support different elements of all three. Mr. Mayor, your mention of a nationwide search, I think, has total and complete merit. In fact, I would strongly suggest, depending upon what happens, our conversation later regarding city attorney, there may be a need, since there was a limited pool to choose from, that we may want to look at expanding that search. But I have a larger concern, and it has to do with timing of all this, and that is, I'm looking, and I'm including my seat, three of the five that are sitting here now are, their seats available, that are gonna change in November. And so, there's going to be a new commission that will be seated here, the middle of November of 2019, 2018, excuse me. I'm not sure how many people would want to apply for a position, knowing that three of their five bosses may be different in just a very short period of time. So, I'm of the belief that perhaps nationwide search is warranted, but we also have a greater conversation another time, not today, on what the timing of that is, and maybe it gets delayed and we allow the next commission to make those decisions. So, my recommendation would be to not make a decision today on the interim, because I think currently interim or deputy, or whatever you want to refer to, Mr. Goad, city manager is doing a fine job, but it just seems to me that we should delay this decision and perhaps leave that up to the next commission, but in the process, either way, have a nationwide search, in my opinion, for all three positions. I think it's that important, but more important to decide when all that happens.
I believe there is a sentiment for at least three of the commissioners not to pursue making an appointment of the interim city manager. I do think that we're within our parliamentary right and appropriateness to make that decision if we choose today. I still stand my, and I haven't spoken to former city manager Anita Favors Thompson, I ask her, she may be wanting to kill me for throwing her name out there, you know, at this point. So it is certainly appropriate to ascertain the level of interest, but assuming her interest is, is there, she'd have my support to do that. But it seems we may not have the votes to make that decision today, but I do think that's a decision that obviously confronts this commission. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I mean, I seconded the motion for, for discussion purposes, not knowing myself if Anita was interested in serving in that capacity. I did see her at church the other night, and I told her that if we got to the point where we needed to do a national search for a new city manager and involve a citizen committee, I asked her if she might be interested in being a part of that process, but not to serve as an interim city manager, not knowing where we would be today. I didn't want to be presumptuous. But we've gotta make a decision. We've, we've got to choose an interim city manager, be it Reese Goad to continue in that capacity, or to appoint a city, we, we don't have any other choice, but to approve a manager going forward as of today. Right now, we don't, we do not have that. If we're saying that Reese is, is no longer interim at this point, because he was serving while the, Mr. Fernandez was on, on paid administrative leave, so we, we clearly have that decision to make one way or the other before we leave this dais today. I certainly agree that we should have a national search. I, I profited that position three years ago when I came to this commission, that we should have done it. We may be in a better place now because of some of Rick's accomplishments, but certainly I would agree that we need to do a national search. But I would remind us, we have done a national search in the past for a city manager for the city of Tallahassee, and it was one of the worst decisions that this city could have ever made, if you all remember that, those that were here. So if we do a national search, we need to be clear on what it is we're looking for, who we're looking for, the qualities that we seek in that individual. And, and we, we certainly need to take our time. I wouldn't suggest that we need to rush this process. The city is being managed, I think, very appropriately under Reese's leadership and the leadership of the other assistant city managers and our very capable staff that's out there right now, still performing services for the citizens of this city, and residents and guests. And so I, I think that we should move in that direction, take our time. I don't know that we need to wait until a November election. I think we can make that decision at whatever appropriate time prior to that, if we go through the, the process in the appropriate manner, be transparent, involve the community in every way possible in making that decision, and then come up with the best person to lead this community going forward. We need stability at this point. We need to prove to the citizens of the city of Tallahassee that we have a capable and functioning government, despite what the media might be writing and wanting to lead them to believe, we have not skipped a beat in city government, right here in City Hall. We have not skipped a beat in the last several months. When I get up in the morning, my lights come on, my water runs, I drive to work on refurbished and resurfaced roads, our park system is still one of the best in the nation, we're serving our senior citizens, and the list goes on and on about the wonderful services that are being provided to its citizens by the city of Tallahassee. And for anybody to think otherwise in a, in a city that I know I love, and that I've been here for forty years and are raising my family here, and there is no place else I would want to live, I was talking to Pam earlier, telling her about our trip to Asheville, North Carolina, and as beautiful it was, as it was in Asheville, and as much as I enjoyed that trip, I couldn't wait to get back to my hometown of Tallahassee, Florida. I love this place. I wouldn't take it over any other place. And, and I resent the fact that anybody would tell me that I don't care about this community and the residents that I serve, that elected me to be here. I do care. I have given almost half of my adult life to serving this city and this, this area. I have done it without a speck of controversy, ethical lapses, or, or legal problems. And so I resent when anyone accuses me of that, especially people who don't know me personally, or know what I've done in this community. If you want to make those kinds of accusations against me, get to know me, talk to me about what I've done and the commitment that I have made to this community in and out of elective office. My service to this community doesn't stop with elective office. It's as a neighborhood association president, it's as a board member of various not-for-profit organizations. So let's not make wild dispersions about people's services when you don't know them or what they have done or provided for this community. But we need stability right now in the city of Tallahassee. I wouldn't think that our brand has been damaged such that people aren't still moving here. Everywhere I go in this community, I see development occurring, housing development, multifamily housing, single-family housing, our housing market is, is robust right now. That suggests that people are moving here. They're not leaving the city of Tallahassee. I had people in Asheville asking me about the city of Tallahassee, and telling me how much they admire about our capital city, and that made me feel good. And so, I think that, that we should move forward today then with appointing an interim city manager. And Mr. Mayor, if that needs to be made in the form of a motion, I would move that we appoint Mr. Reese Goad, our deputy city manager, as our ongoing interim city manager. And again, that we immediately begin the process of a national search for a city manager, and if that process can be accomplished within the next six months, eight months, so be it. If it extends out until the next election, I'm okay with that. But I want this community to know that we are doing our job in a responsible manner, and that it will include every segment of this community in that decision, so all of us can be confident in the next person that we appoint to lead this community. Finally, Commissioners...
Do you have a second? I want to second your motion for Reese Goad to reaffirm him as the interim city manager.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioners, I'll support the motion and request that we agenda this question of an interim city manager during this city commission retreat. And I also think that we ought to use that time to talk through what our own individual expectations are for a search process. I agree with you, Commissioner, that it ought to be as citizen engaged and as citizens field and as accommodating of the everyday folks of this community and what their expectations are in a city manager, as, as possible. I don't believe that we need to necessarily intention ourselves around waiting for a new election.
Right.
The last of my priorities when I got here was who we're gonna choose as a city manager. That, that was in many ways, and I think for many people who run for these positions, are taken for granted, that we, you know, the fact that we've got a, a well-run and a well-organized government, most folks get here and want to get their priorities moving, not necessarily tangle themselves in a, in a long-drawn-out process of a selection. So, in support of the motion, I would simply ask that we also agenda this conversation for the city commission retreat.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I, I hear, hear your discussion, and I'm not trying to inject myself there, but I believe you had Commissioner Miller's original motion, and then your substitute motion. I don't believe either of those was acted upon or withdrawn, so I think with what was just suggested.
I perceived hers to be a withdrawal once she mentioned that. She said that, but we didn't, from a process standpoint, identify that. I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw the second.
Great. So the motion and second by Commissioner Richardson, second and by me, is on the floor?
That is, and Commissioner Miller, I assume you also withdrew your, your motion. So on the floor is a motion and a second to appoint Reese Goad as the interim city manager.
Okay. I would only, and I'm okay with all that, but I would like for us to at least have a discussion, and I don't mean to put Mr. Goad on a, on a, such a short rope here, but our retreat, I would like to have a further conversation to potentially having somebody else come in and serve in that city manager's interim role until such time as we are able to hire our next permanent city manager. And that's not any indication of my feelings towards Reese, because I think he's outstanding, but, but there may be a need for us to have someone else in that position between whenever we make it and the time that a new city manager's hired. So if we could, and I'm willing to support to vote on this for now, recognizing that we may do something different in two weeks, or a week, is that next week?
Yeah, that's next week, yes.
If that's part of everyone's perception, I'm not sure if it is.
Well, I'll just say my comments were in line with what you just said, which is that, that this is a conversation that we ought to have, especially this question of whether or not the interim can also apply to be the permanent, and I, and I just think those things need to be part of our consideration. There is a motion and a second on the floor for the appointment of...
What do you mean? Please repeat the motion.
Yeah, for the appointment of Reese Goad as the interim city manager. Actually, I don't know if it was accepted that we add that this also be a topic of conversation on the city commission retreat.
I can accept that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification, because part of that motion was too, that we immediately begin the, the process for a national search.
So I think with respect, I think that that's within the parameters of the retreat as well.
I don't, that's not my understanding. I thought we were going to appoint Mr. Goad today, and then we were going to discuss this again at the retreat, as far as what moves forward, because I am not willing to jump into that topic at this moment, so...
I, I think that was my understanding, I think that's the understanding of the, of the motion that was just passed, Commissioner.
So what...
What just passed is that Reese Goad will continue to serve as interim.
And?
And that we will agenda our conversation on not only this search, but the question around the interim manager at the city commission retreat.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's fine, thank you.
Now, we may have just blown the agenda of the retreat up, but I'm not, but I think this is certainly the highest of priorities.
Sure.
Commissioners, we're now on item two, the update on the city attorney recruitment process and authorization to begin the recruitment process for the vacant city attorney position, and I'm gonna turn it over to Reese for introduction.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, this item provides an update on the status of the recruitment efforts for the city attorney position, which you began back in November, and a recommendation for a process to fill the city auditor position. As you know, city attorney Shelley will retire after twenty-five years of service on January 31st, this month, and auditor Burt Fletcher retired as of December 31st, and we'll miss them both dearly. Mr. Shelley?
You see, he didn't return the comment.
He may be thinking, rethinking his retirement. Commissioners, with your approval, staff is ready to begin right away a recruitment process for the city auditor position that includes a national advertisement, a citizen review process, and a ninety-day schedule to fill the vacancy, so that you can move quickly. The human resources department believes that based on past experience, you will receive many qualified candidates, and at this time, I'd like to ask Treasurer Clerk Jim Cook to share some background regarding the last recruitment processes for both of these positions, also provide an overview of the citizen committee's review of the city attorney applications that occurred last week, and frame the recommended actions for your consideration.
Thank you, Reese. Mayor and Commissioners, just wanted to point out that for the city attorney replacement and recruitment, you did identify a process in, in November that we have followed to this point, and I'll give you a little more update on that in a moment. Also wanted to point out that that process, as well as what is laid out in the agenda item for the city auditor, are very much consistent with processes for city attorney, city auditor, and city treasurer clerk. It seems unusual, and we are pretty compressed in the, in the various, or multiple positions... It seems unusual, and we are pretty compressed in the various, or multiple positions that we're considering right now, but each of those three was replaced in the 2012 to 13 timeframe. So again, a fairly condensed turnover, if you will. Each of those cases, we applied a national search managed by our HR process, our HR department here at the city. In each case, there were a number of applicants, multiple eligible applicants of a variety. I think the city auditor, the last time, there were probably 90 who applied and maybe 25 who were qualified. The city attorney, maybe 15 or 20 who applied and a half dozen who were qualified. And I think in each case, there's been an interim step to get names to the city commission, whether it be the appointed officials performing additional or initial interviews, or whether it be a citizen review committee, as we've had with these applications for the city attorney. So with that background, I'll point out that on the city attorney process in front of us, you did ask to have a national broad advertisement period, which we did. As a matter of fact, consulted with Martha Barnett, who I think one or more of you mentioned during that last, that November commission meeting, to make sure that we were covering the waterfront on the right places to advertise for that position. And we did so. You also approved a review committee of citizens to look at those applications. Each of you appointed a member to that committee. Want to thank that group for their flexibility and willingness to respond quickly. They actually met on December 26th. So the day after Christmas, that group met here. Ellen Blair and I were in attendance at that meeting. They discussed the applications that had been received. They provided all of the applications, also the indication that three of those met our qualifications for local government experience that we look for in a city attorney. And they acted to move forward all three of those to you for consideration. That was the single action that they took. They did have a robust discussion about process and number of applicants and that sort of thing. I think they, like you, clearly want the best candidate they can get for the city attorney. They recognize that as an important position. There was some discussion of whether a longer period would generate more applications. There was also some discussion that the city commission put in a process that should be followed, and I think notably that all three of the candidates that they looked at were qualified and that there was no question among that review committee whether those should be moved forward to you. So those are being presented to you by that committee. We have set aside some time on your calendars on January 17th that you could conduct interviews. We set that time way, way back, well before the application period concluded. We just wanted to reserve some time, and so we'll try to firm that up and make sure that that's still a good date. But that's where that is, so if you want to proceed there, you can. I'll stop there for a moment. I do want to make a comment or two on the city auditor, but I want to at least give that background to you.
Great. Commissioner Richardson, followed by Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Jim, thank you for that overview and historical perspective on the process that we've used to select the appointed officials in the past. And it's important to note that in no way does what we've done this time differ from what I can see in what we've done in the past in choosing or selecting our appointed officials. I see no need to go out for another search. We've done a national search. We've done a statewide search. We got nine applicants, if I'm correct.
Correct.
Is it nine?
Yes, sir.
Three of those met our minimum qualifications. And I've made no secret about the fact that I currently support our deputy city attorney for the position. I think she is eminently qualified for the position, has done an outstanding job as our deputy. I understand we've got a very well-qualified person out of Jacksonville and one out of South Florida that have applied. I think we should move forward with the interview process, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. If out of that process, we find we are still not where we want to be in terms of the person that we want in that position, then we, at that point, we can make the decision as to whether or not we need to re-advertise. But I think that one of the things we do need to look at and consider is that as, there are going to be lots of changes in the leadership of this city, it's going to be important that we have individuals in, there is an infestation appeared, individuals that have an institutional knowledge of the organization and can bring that to bear as decisions are being made. I don't know that we won't all new and fresh faces that haven't faced and understand some of the issues that we will be confronting in the coming weeks and months and years. And so I just want us to keep that in, take that into consideration as well as we make the selection. But my motion would be that we move forward with the interview process that's scheduled for January 17th.
I'll second. Commissioner Miller.
Commissioners, well, first of all, we had the mention earlier today that, of conditions which might be present that would indicate to someone that they might not want to apply. One of those is that whether they think that there's a candidate, an internal candidate that's already going to get the job and so on and so forth. And it is disturbing to me that two of you have already indicated to the public that there is, you've already made up your minds. So please keep that in mind. And, but the point, the reason that I raise my hand is this. I had forwarded to me by, not by the individual, but by someone who was a friend of theirs, a text message that indicates what happened here in this process, and I'm going to read that to you. "I submitted an application for the city attorney job on the last day of Friday. On the following Monday, HR called and said my app didn't completely come through, that it was a glitch on their end, so they gave me until the end of that week to submit again. On Tuesday, toward the end of the day, while I was at work, they asked me to get it in immediately because the review committee was about, was meeting in about an hour to review apps," which probably they should have known on Monday. I added that. "I told them I was at work, I could not get on bar computer and redo my whole application, and that, quote, 'This is insane and maybe this just isn't meant to be.'" Now, that's not, that's not okay. I mean, the fact that people tried to get their applications in, they couldn't do it, and then were given basically bad information. I don't know what you're going to do about that, but I have a real concern about that, and I'm just laying this on the table. I agree with Commissioner Richardson that we should go ahead and interview the people that we have on the 17th, but this is very disturbing to me, and I don't know what you want to do about that.
May I speak to that, Mayor? Yeah, please. I think it's important for me to follow up and bring back some more specific information, but I can speak generally to it and that I do, I'm aware generally of the situation, not as specifically as you just laid out, Commissioner Miller, but was aware that we had an individual who had applied on the last day and had a problem with the application. My understanding was that HR made multiple attempts to reach the individual, contact them, provide opportunity, and that the individual ended up not reapplying. That sounds different than what you've just described, so I would like to follow up on that. I think, I do think from a staff perspective, every effort we thought was made. Apparently, there's a miscommunication. I'd like to follow up on that one specifically, but I think otherwise, everything went well. That's the only instance where I heard there was any issue with any of the applications.
Well, on that point, if this person's qualified, I'd like to interview them also.
I would just say, one, I think it's a luxury that we had the opportunity to even read that email at this meeting in the case of the selection of the last city manager. We selected that person at a committee meeting where it was not advertised, we would be selecting the city manager, and we didn't get the benefit of any advertisement or any applications whatsoever. Regarding my comments around conditions that create a pattern of folks making the choice not to apply, and you've seen this before in university president selections, where they have set conditions where the sitting or the interim president doesn't have the opportunity to compete as a way not to bias. In this case, what we have here is the actual city attorney, not an interim serving in that position, so not biased. This person is absolutely moving on. And we've had a condition in that office that was set up to train the qualified person in the sensibilities of succession planning to make them ready for that position. I'm, I said it at the last meeting, I thought Ms. Jackson was qualified to be appointed at the time. I still feel, and it seems the committee agrees, that she's qualified certainly to make it to an interview round. And I think we ought to move forward with that interview round on January, on January the 17th. So I hope we'll get a opportunity to get a more thorough report back on what happened in this particular case-
Absolutely.
...determine the interest of the individual and whether or not they are, in fact, qualified to be interviewed. And if there's no objection from the committee, I'd be happy to see them interviewed on the 17th as well, assuming they meet all those conditions and their interests is still there. But again, our first hearing of it, so I appreciate you bringing it to the attention of the Commissioner, Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion to move forward with the interviews, and it is my opinion and position that we should handle all three of these vacancies the same way. So whatever the commission decides, if we decide to do national search, we decide to do headhunters, if we decide to make interims ineligible or eligible, whatever it is, that we just do it the same way for each one of the positions, that makes the most sense to me. And the good news is, we have good people that are there that can be interims. We have good people that can do the jobs that have applied and, you know, so I think we're in good shape, just like uniformity between the positions. I support the motion.
Commissioner Ziffer, followed by Commissioner Miller.
I'm going to be supportive just to move the process forward, recognizing that after we do the three interviews, that if there's a majority clerk that they're unsatisfied with the three, that we perhaps look at a different method than we have currently. Commissioner Richardson, you mentioned, I think, I know you said statewide, but also we've had a nationwide search. I'm not sure how much of a nationwide search we just had for this position. In fact, I remember specifically the conversation was a need to be a member of the Florida Bar already, and, you know, I didn't quite understand that at the time because I think if we really find somebody good, that we could probably work through some kind of timing to give them the opportunity to do whatever's required to get that bar approval. But having said that, I'll be willing to move forward and I'll approve the motion, recognizing that if that, after those interviews, if I'm not satisfied, I'm certainly going to speak up and suggest we go a different route.
Great. There's a, Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I am, I agree with Commissioner Ziffer that this does not meet the definite, my definition of a national search, just to do advertisements and a few national periodicals over the Christmas holiday essentially, or over Thanksgiving. But, and, but I can't quite be on board with what Commissioner Maddox is suggesting, is that we're deciding, in this case, what we do for everything. These three jobs have a significantly different levels of complexity. One is fairly narrow in scope. They audit people, and that's what they do. And legal is a little broader in the fact that you have a variety of cases and a variety of types of law. The city managers is broader still. We have a government that is even unlike others in the fact that we have the airport, we have Star Metro, we have the utilities, we have, every conceivable thing is managed by someone in the city, and the manager has to be in charge of all of that. So it takes a unique individual to be able to hold the reins of all those horses at one time. I, for one, am going to be wanting to have, to hire a firm to go and do a search for us. I don't think that's necessary at all in the case of the auditor, and we're already in the middle of our selection for the attorney. So I just wanted to make clear that I can't support the motion if it includes that we have to do exactly the same thing for every one of these offices. So if y'all could clarify that for me, I'd appreciate it.
As I understand it, that is not the motion.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to disagree with Commissioner Ziffer and Miller to some degree in that this was not a national search. This was, in fact, a national search, from what I heard from the attorney, based on the advice we got from Martha Barnett, who suggested the places that we advertise. It makes sense that if you, talk to FAMU about hiring an attorney from outside of the state without Florida Bar licensure and the experience they had with that. We don't want to go that route. We, and I would imagine that those are probably the minimum criteria that any municipality would use. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, because I'm new to all of this, but I would think that any Florida municipal government, if they were seeking to hire an attorney, would want that attorney already licensed and barred in the state of Florida. You don't, you don't have a grace period because you're going to be faced with issues day one when you come, step into that office. You don't have a grace period to get licensed over however long it would take you. We have done a national search. I think the city attorney and the treasurer clerk did that in a good-faith manner. That resulted in nine applications, three who met the minimum qualifications, and I think based on that, we're set to go forward and to choose the next city attorney so that we can, again, begin to build stability in the leadership of this city.
There is a motion and a second. I will just say finally, I do have, I take some comfort in knowing that six unqualified candidates were able to find this application and apply, that-
Yeah.
Certainly qualified candidates should have been able to identify this application and make their submissions. We do have a motion and a second on the floor to continue with the, although we haven't dealt with the auditor, I don't believe that's taken up in this motion.
It's not yet.
It isn't in this motion. So the first motion that we have on this item is that we proceed with interviews of the three qualified candidates for city attorney on January 17th. And it has been seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion on the city auditor?
Mr. Mayor, if I may just introduce that real quickly.
Yes, please.
I think the item's pretty well laid out in the agenda, recommends a process that would involve a 30-day or so advertisement period across appropriate publications, similar to what were used as resources in the last city auditor search, which did generate, I had mentioned a couple of numbers earlier, they are specifically in the agenda item. In the last go-around, we received 95 applications, 26 of which were qualified during a similar advertisement period. This recommend, the recommended actions, if you took them all together, would be to appoint an interim city auditor while this search is underway, given that Mr. Fletcher has begun his retirement. It would approve the process outlined in the agenda item and would ask each of you to provide an individual to serve as a citizen review committee of those applications, and that you do so by January 31st. That's the, that's the item.
Move approval and move that Mr. Don Hancock be named as the interim city auditor-
Second.
While the process moves.
There's a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioners, I would just say, and I didn't say this before the motion, so I apologize, but my expectation would be that we would also include this in part of our conversation during the retreat around expectations for how broad and how wide we expect the ultimate search to be.
Are we going to also have a citizens committee do the review the way we did before?
I think they've requested now one-
Yeah, that's in the item.
One from each of us.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, on that point, if I could, take a moment to recognize Ms. Pam Butler. If you'll wave your hand, she's here on behalf of the city's audit committee. She's here on behalf of Chairman Matt Hansard. He's out of the country at the moment, but that, a member of that committee would be included in the citizen review committee.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Butler. Commissioners, we're now on to item three, approval of settlement lawsuit, Mr. Attorney and Mr. Cook.
Mayor, Commissioners, as I've indicated to all of you previously, we were served with a lawsuit on, I think, November 29th this year, brought by the Tallahassee Democrat against the city, dealing with the issue of public records. And as a result of that, the city attorney's office has been working with the attorneys for the Tallahassee Democrat. for the Tallahassee Democrat, in an attempt to reach a agreement on a consent judgment that we could present to the circuit court as a final judgment to be enforced, dealing with the city's responsibilities with respect to Chapter 119 of the public records law. Let me first say that we, Lou Norvell, my office, and John Moyle, who is here, has been the attorney representing the Democrat, and we spent a lot of hours and we've beat each other up quite a bit. I haven't, in my years practicing here, found anyone more a fierce advocate, but a gentleman and easy to work with and knowing the law than John Moyle. So I appreciate your involvement in this case and, and helping to get us to what I can recommend to this commission in the agenda item, a resolution of the public records lawsuit. Now, let, let me say, as I've told all the leadership team here in, in other meetings, that I am, I'm glad that we're at this point now, because over the past several months, I know many of us that work in this office have been concerned that we have slipped, maybe even fallen, in our responsibility to be, from my perspective, the shining beacon, beacon among local governments in compliance with Chapter 119, the public records law. I think in large part, what has happened over the last several years is the fact that some technology has developed that the public records laws and the meaning of keeping up with have not moved forward together. Be that as it may, we have to admit, and I have freely admitted in writing, that in compliance with the public records law with respect to text messaging, we have not been in compliance. And, you know, there's no reason we should sugarcoat that, okay? It's not that we're alone, probably three out of four local governments that we've talked to over the last year, or even two years, as we worked on a variety of text messaging policies are in no better shape than we are. That is not an excuse. It is not an excuse that we don't absolutely be the leader in this area and take pride in fully complying with Chapter 119, whatever the cost, and it's going to be additional, and we've already indicated, as much as $100,000 right off the bat, to get additional software, to get additional city phones. But it also takes a commitment, and I know each of you have that commitment from talking to you, to be fully in compliance with every aspect of, of the public records law. And it's going to take your leadership, the leadership of our department heads and ACMs and interim city manager going forward, to implement all the things that we have told, and will be telling the court that we're going to do. And I know we're capable of that, and I know it's going to be difficult and time-consuming, and some people are going to say, do I have to do that? And we're going to have to answer yes. And we're going to constantly continue electronically and technology-wise to, to be able to do this job better and cheaper and more efficient at the same time. So having made that little speech, I hope that you will approve the agenda item, staff recommendation. It involves a lot of policy changes, many of which have already been brought to you. And it also involves a commitment from the top down and throughout the organization to be fully compliant with the public records law, and I know we can and will do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, city attorneys.
I'm going to move option one with, but I want to make just a quick comment if I could. Mr. City Attorney, you made a comment there regarding other cities around the state, certainly around the country, where there are other laws in effect that, that apply, such as this. There's no question, we all need to do a better job. I've already had the conversation with some of my colleagues over at the Florida League of Cities. This is going to become a greater priority for us, because there are other cities that are probably having the same issues, and we need to set an example, which is what we're doing here. So I want to thank, and I know this sounds odd, considering the, the difficulty this has caused, but I want to thank the Democrats for bringing this as far forward as they did. I want to thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for working through this resolution. There are a lot of steps here that are included, there are a lot of things each one of us are going to have to do. They're all really important for us to do. There's absolutely no question. So I want to thank you, and as I said, I move option one.
There's a motion and a second for option one. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But, you know, this may sound corny, because it sounds like a civics lesson, but what this points to is the importance, the extreme importance of a free press in our democratic form of government. You know, I, I hate what I'm hearing nationally about how the press is being reviled and, and called fake news, because there is a role for the press in this whole process. And this points to that very important role. Had it not been for the Democrat and the partnership, because I see it as a partnership, I hate, I hated that it had to get to the point where it became somewhat adversarial in the courts. But through that partnership, and both sides being willing to negotiate a resolution, I think we've come up with something that will certainly benefit not only the residents of the city of Tallahassee, in terms of our continued commitment to transparency and providing public records when they are requested from the city of Tallahassee, but even beyond that, to be a prototype for cities across the state, and, and indeed, this nation. I don't know that, you know, there is a precedent for this anywhere in the country. And so I see it as a win-win. And again, I too, Commissioner Miller, Ziffer, I'm sorry, would like to thank our partners at the Tallahassee Democrat for being a part of this and helping us to move this issue forward. And certainly, we as a city organization will do everything that we can, even expending the funds that will be necessary to make sure that this is implemented and implemented in the spirit that it was negotiated. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Maddox.
I, I would just add quickly that we, we should take, we should review other areas that perhaps need updating. You know, you have, we are all part-time elected officials. When we get elected, we're told what the policies are and we follow them. And that's what we've done with public records. We've been briefed by the city attorney's office, and we follow what we've been told to do. I understand that with technology, things change, and perhaps our policies aren't keeping pace with those. So I'd be interested to see if there are other areas that we might be out of compliance, that we have not looked at, and to have our appointed officials and those that work underneath them to review those, so that we don't find ourselves in this position again.
Agreed.
Right. Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I know that in the past, that we had a system where our aides met with the city attorney's office every month, just to get updates on this type of thing. And I don't know if we still do that. I see shaking heads. And so that was really when Mr. English was here in my first term. So I think that if we could possibly begin that practice again, where you just have them down just to chat once a month on any, the status of various things related to the commissioners' offices, I think that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Great. City Attorney, just one question on the, and the briefing material, you mentioned that the transmission of any public record via email over private server, meaning Gmail, Yahoo, is prohibited. How do you treat incoming emails from outside folks who email you at those accounts? If you bring that then into the government by forwarding it, is that in compliance? Or how do, how do we, how do we view that?
Okay, I'm, I'm going to ask Lou Norvell, who was, spent more hours on this than most people, to talk specifically about outside emails coming in particularly, because that's obviously something that we've had an issue with and a concern about.
So, Mr. Mayor, for, for all of our city communications that originate within our Talgov system, they are automatically captured. So we do recognize that there may be emails that come in from outside of the organization, for instance, that may come to you. So the protocol here would be that we will forward those or receive those and, and archive them within our system. So receipt, I understand it's come from the outside, will be captured and archived, but for our city communications, regular city business, city employees should use the Talgov email system.
Got it. Commissioners, Ziffer.
Well, I think the question would be, if Curtis Baines, sorry Curtis, you were just sitting there, if he sends me an email to my company email that has to do with city business, do I then forward that to my Talgov account so that it becomes part of a record?
Yes. If you, in that instance, we would need to make sure that it gets within the city system. Anything that you forward to the Talgov system is automatically captured.
Which would then, I would think, would hold true, for example, I mean, I have two phones now, but if somebody were to send me a text on my regular account, I should forward that to my Talgov phone, because then we're going to have it captured, correct?
Yes. So the, the protocol, what, what will be in place for text messages, messages sent to city phones will be automatically captured.
Automatically, but, I'm sorry.
And right now, any email that travels through the Talgov system, whether or not it's sent or received, is archived and captured.
So if any of us gets something on our personal, we should forward it to our city account?
Yes, sir.
Yes, the answer to that is yes. And, and we also discovered that we have, in a number of areas, supervisors and even department heads that were utilized in private phones as opposed to public phones, and regularly accepted in those. And even among yourselves and your aides, it's, it's imperative, and I know that all, all of you are in compliance now, to try to make sure that if, if you're receiving calls or texts on your private phones, that you let the originator of that message know and, and try to correct that behavior, so that everything does go to the, the government phone, where everything will be, both texts and emails will be archived and, and collected.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Miller.
In a couple of incidents, this unfortunately hasn't happened very often, because I'm not a regular on Facebook on a daily basis, but I've gotten inquiries at least twice about some question that somebody had about a city facility, why is this road closed, why are you, did you just rebuild this particular thing, and now you're doing this other thing? And I'm not sure I know how to forward a message that's received on Facebook to anybody. So, and I think I've tried to forward that, because when I get a message like that, what I need to do is forward it to my city email, so my office can handle it. And so if you guys can look into that and give us some guidance as to how we're supposed to do that, I'd do, I would appreciate the assistance.
Commissioner, there, there's a lot of, of social media out there, and we are working with our technology and innovation folks on protocols on how to preserve these things. So yes, there's multiple methods by which you could receive over social media a document that we need to archive, and we are working with our folks to come up with, with guidance and protocols for preservation.
Unfortunately, it doesn't happen very often, because I don't encourage the use of that messaging system. But yeah, if we have to do that, you need to let us know how to do it.
Somebody needs to check Jim Cook's Tinder account. Swipe left.
I appreciate you thinking of me in this time.
Yes. I want to join in, in my appreciation to the city attorney's office and partner counsel on reaching this solution. I do think we're probably standing at the vanguard on updating the policies in this, in this space. I also think you're giving the Florida League of Cities president a good example of, of who could come in and train other municipalities, probably around the state and country, on the steps that are being taken here to modernize the government and to bring public records into the 21st century. And so, in that regard, thank you very much. And it's my hope that we'll get a little bit of a financial update on exactly what we're anticipating the, the cost to be to the, to the government, to the taxpayers. I think all of us agree it's probably one worth expending. And also, a little bit of time to bring all of our staffs up to speed. My guess is, is that any city staffer who transacts business must have a cellphone. Is, is that the direction we're going for all city employees?
Yes, sir.
Got it.
That's correct. And, and for your awareness along those lines, we've got a, a training schedule on January 17th. We want to make sure we move forward quickly on this, all the questions that you have and, and that others have, I think they're, they're shared by the workforce as well, to make sure we're clear on what we need to do, how we do it, and make sure we meet our obligations.
And for, toward that end, we have different departments within the government that have their own social media accounts. Now, that is its own archival system, or is there an expectation, because I've done the same in my office, we've just set up a mayor of Tallahassee account which can be transferred to whomever who comes afterward or not. But it, it is in its own way, its own archival system, or is the expectation, and if you don't know the answer to it, you can let us know later, that we will need to figure out a method of moving what is already, seems to be pretty public and transparent, onto some other system?
Mr. Mayor, as I understand it, they do serve as their own archival systems, but we'll make sure we get you more information about that. We don't want to run stray from, from not capturing that information.
We, we're also, the training that Reese talked about, it is not a one-shot deal. And I think our commitment and the policies going forward is that we'll be doing continual training on this. We'll also be annually, we've added provisions to our critical policies that each employee has to sign off on, and, and it reflected in their personnel files, a more extensive and expansive public records requirement, acknowledging the need to collect and archive text, and if they come in by different ways and, and private, their obligation is still being there. So I think we, we're looking for both, and, and a wrapped-up, ongoing education process on this. And Commissioner Miller, I, I know that we have in the past done month-to-month training, and I think, examples, real examples that we encounter can certainly be useful in training other parts of, of our workforce, and we intend to do, to do that. And through training, also through the independent ethics officer, there's not only ethics training, but public records and, and open meeting training coming in through that source also. So it, it's going to take not only dollars in terms of the needed technology or additional phones, but it's going, it's going to take additional time and commitment of staff, and it's not a one-shot deal, and it shouldn't be a one-shot deal, to keep ourselves in, in full compliance.
One, one last point on that, Mayor, if I may. I think a couple of you have mentioned changes and policies and bringing things back and different questions, and I think it's going to be incumbent upon us, and as custodians of the records, one of the things I've identified through this is, the education piece is going to be important, making sure that we have current policies at a commission level, so that from the top down, we recognize the importance. And then also just procedural things, because there are myriad issues to deal with, and more importantly, they're only going to change more. And so we need to be flexible and, and responsive. And so those ongoing things that Commissioner Miller and others have, have mentioned will be, be important. I would like to mention one thing slightly apart from that. City Attorney will have his last meeting on January 31st, and so I'm sure each of you will speak to, speak to that. But I wanted to, as a point of personal privilege, refer to the excellent, hard work that he has done over these last, this last month or two. He has, each of these items that is on your agenda today is on the agenda because you had a called meeting in something special and unusual and timely, and, which means that the city attorney has been involved with each of those things. I think all of your staff have worked on them, but I think he, due to the nature of working with lawyers on another side of an issue, has put in an extraordinary amount of effort over a holiday period when, when most of us were trying to, to take a break. of effort over a holiday period when most of us were trying to take a break. So I want to, just as a point of personal privilege, thank Lou for all of his hard work.
Here, here.
Thank you. Isn't he going on vacation on Friday after all that work?
Is there a motion in a second to accept the settlement? There's a motion in a second to approve the settlement of the lawsuit. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Is there any other business before the government? Commissioner Ziffer.
I want to—is the chief still here? Did he go? Just—I want to thank our police department. I want to thank our management. I want to thank our communications department. Over the last 24 hours, we had to get a lot of information out in order to be prepared for what turned out to be a winter storm—not terribly bad a winter storm, but removing all the safety issues. Was that not fun, to watch the snow falling?
Yeah, yeah.
It was. So having said that, that's it for me.
Great. City Manager.
If I can add along those lines, eastbound on the I-10 was closed, and during this meeting, I've been told it's been reopened, so we're back to normal.
Great.
Glenn, I wanted to thank you all for moving the meeting to one, so we didn't have to get in the car until it all thawed out.
Oh, we slept longer, right? If there's no other business, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.